The special meeting of the Waco City Council on August 29, 2023 to order at 6:02 PM. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Welcome to all of our guests and visitors. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during a hearing, the hearing of visitors portion of our agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak in a not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary at the registration table outside of the auditorium so that staff can contact you if necessary. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are a couple of cards I have for the hearing of visitors. The first item, the first card I'll call is Ken Cooper to speak on agenda item 620.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name's Ken Cooper. I live at 107 West Ridge Lane and Woodway. I build and develop property in Waco. I'm here to speak about some impact fees that may be coming forward and specifically the ramifications from House bill at 3842 or something to that effect. I'm concerned about the city fees that have been escalating at a pretty alarming rate, specifically when it comes to the impact on the development community itself. In 2019, I'm going to give you some numbers just to consider. The fee for the development was at .75%. A $3 million development, that fee comes to $22,500. The next year, it went up to 1.5, the next year 2%, the next year 4%, and is proposed to be at 5% with the exception of this particular law that's gone into effect. That number escalates from 22.5 to $150,000 for the fee in four years. The proposal is using calculations that none of this community has had any input into. I'm concerned about how those are going to impact, how that might be calculated. I've talked to some other engineers who I think want to speak on this as well. I'd really like for us to have a seat at the table, to have some further discussions about this, what might be done, how it could be maybe implemented. I understand something needs to be done before September 1st because of the laws. I just want to make sure that the community, the impact to the community is one that's not detrimental. I can already tell you that I've had some people have discussions with me that say I'm done with the city of Waco. I don't want to do more work in the city of Waco. I'm not in that position. I have land in a community that I have started out on the west side of town. I think some of you are pretty familiar with that. We're trying to do it right, but it impacts the individual addresses specifically. Lot cost per lot on my development, the first phase, would have gone from $484 per lot to $2,800 per lot, just for this fee alone. We've also added impact fees on the building permit for roads and water and sewer. So are those fees calculated in this? No, they're not. Those are added to this. Now, I'm going to pay for those. I'm not opposed to paying for those, but that cost is all going to be passed on to the consumer. It has to be. It's not something that developers are just out here trying to figure out a way to make more money. That's not part of this equation at all. When costs go up, it goes up to the consumer. And I just want you all to, you know, allow us to have a seat at the table in any other further discussion before this becomes effectively implemented or allow us to do something with it.
Sure. Thank you. And we'll appreciate you, Mr. Cooper. And I'm sure that in the work session, a presentation on this, if there's any discrepancies in what you said, those will be addressed. And if not, we'll certainly sit at the table with you. City Attorney, I was going to come and ask you this, but I ran out of time. We have a bunch of folks here today. Can we skip out of order on the agenda to move to the proclamation? Because I just would hate for us to work all the way through work sessions before we get to a proclamation for all of the guests that are here tonight.
Sure.
We can do that?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Then what I'm going to do is I'm going to skip ahead to a proclamation proclaiming August 29, 2023 as Midway Little League Day. And so I'm going to ask the manager Edward Ramos and assistant coaches Eric Sorata and Sean Becknall to join me at the podium if you could. I'm going to read this. First of all, I just want to say it's with a great deal of pride that our city has for your success, and we're really thankful for your efforts and work and dedication and very proud that you're a part of our city. So I'll read this proclamation now. I Dylan Meek, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Waco, do hereby proclaim August 29, 2023 as Midway Little League All-Stars Day in the city of Waco and urge all citizens to join with the city council, city staff, and me in celebrating and congratulating the Midway Little League All-Stars for their win at the Little League Softball World Series. The 2023 tournament was held in Greenville, North Carolina from August 6th to August 13th, 2023. Facing a bracket of 12 teams from around the world, the All-Stars were competing in their second straight 12U Little League Softball World Series, aiming to defend their 2022 title. On August 13th, 2023, the All-Stars defeated the New England Region team to place third overall in the tournament, an amazing win. With a 5-1 win, the All-Stars finished their incredible season with 20 wins and only a single loss. The All-Stars had an astounding record of 223 runs, scored to only nine runs given. These amazing young ladies had an incredible run in the Little League Softball World Series and represented our community with excellence, integrity, and joy. In testimony whereof, witnessed my hand in the seal of the city of Waco this 29th day of August 2023.
All right.
That we tell the girls to stand up and give them round of applause.
Just on behalf of the group and the coaches and the families that are here, I just want to say thank y'all for acknowledging us. Appreciate it.
I think there's a couple of council members who want to get a photograph. So why don't we have everybody come down, and we'll stand on the stage here, and we'll get a picture with you. This team slowly exit, but just in anticipation for what's next, we're going to reopen the public hearing, and Anthony Tom Chessen will be next at the podium. And on deck will be Travis Whitis.
I'm Anthony Tom Chessen. I live at 981 F 565 in Los Texas. I'm a local engineer, work with many of the developers. This change was brought to my attention about 6:30 last night. Came in early, kind of worked through what was emailed me as the new fee schedule, and came up with a couple of versions, one for Church Road Estates and one for Foxborough. I talked to Amy late this afternoon. She sent me her worksheet at Foxborough that they came up with a fee schedule of roughly $89,000 for a project that we just paid $86,000 for a month and a half ago, based on the 4% construction cost. You know, the city was telling me that these changes aren't making much of a difference based on what we paid previously at 4%, which last year we budgeted 2% for the project. Now we pay 4%. I did the same, I did the same spreadsheet that they've got based on everything that's listed in here, and I'm actually coming up with a new fee of $128,000 versus the $89,000. I'm not exactly sure where the discrepancy is, other than the fact many of the items that are in here are not in her worksheet, and maybe they've changed their mind and taken some of these requirements out. I have no idea. This is moving so quickly, there's no way it's ready to pass. Absolutely no. I know y'all are pressured to pass something by September 1st, but I beg you to make it tentative. Let's look at revisiting it in 30 days at the new city council meeting when we've had time, us and the city. We all know the change is coming, but let's get something that we can actually calculate and budget for. I mean, our projects budget two years in advance, and I cannot keep track of these costs. I mean, Billy Wade ate $48,000 on Foxborough because we budgeted that last year 2%. When the project was let, when it was submitted, but unfortunately, we didn't get our preconstruction meeting till after the first year, so they implemented the 4% instead of the 2%. Never saw it coming. But with these changes, it just seems we are not ready. Let's, I know you've got to pass something, but let's put a timeline on it to revisit and reapprove. Now, it could be a staff approval or whatever, but let's do something. We have got to budget these things. I mean, I'm at, yeah, I've got an increase of $2,800 a lot.
Thank you for those comments, and I can promise you that we are committed to really examining this thoughtfully and making sure that we take the right approach to this and working with you.
I know they were under a timeline too, but we've got to figure out a way to work this out.
I completely agree. Next, we have Travis Whitis.
Travis Whitis at 109 West Second Street in Georgetown. I'll just, I'll keep mine a little shorter. You know, basically, I agree with Tony and Ken. You know, I'm also a design engineer. I work for Yalgoe Engineering. I think one of the other subdivisions on this list of the fee comparison is the large subdivision. That's actually, I think, one that I designed. And in there, you can see that we paid $163,414 for the inspection fees, and what the new proposed fees is $250,697.47. You know, again, that's another 2.1% jump over what we just paid. You know, I was also looking through the fee schedule too that's being proposed, and there's a few items on there that I really don't understand, especially in the grading. That's something that's not even inspected in Waco, but it's in the fee schedule for us to pay for inspection fees. And then, you know, other things like the fire hydrant, $570.51 per. If you take the hourly rate for an inspector to inspect a fire hydrant, I think that's five hours or six hours and 45 minutes. And I can tell you that there's really no way that it takes six hours and 45 minutes to inspect a fire hydrant. So I think, you know, like Tony said, I think there's some things that really need to get looked through on this before it gets passed or at least come back and look at it again. And one other thing too that I would throw out is, you know, as a, on our side, I wouldn't mind seeing just, you know, being billed hourly for inspections and not have to, you know, pay it upfront based on, you know, per square foot of asphalt pavement. If we can just get billed hourly for it, you know, I think that would be fine too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak during the hearing of visitors? Seeing no one else, we will close the hearing of visitors, and I don't know why this falls in the agenda right now. Actually, I'm going to skip over this. We'll move to the work session, and we'll move to work session 23, 620. I think Bradley Ford will introduce the speaker.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. We do invite Amy Valarly-Hielen up to the table. She's our Director of Public Works. She'll be providing us an overview of the issue that's been spoken on during the first few speakers relating to House Bill 3492 and its impact on fees for plan review, permits, and construction inspection performed by the city. Looking forward to Amy's presentation and any questions the council has related to the comments earlier.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to give you a presentation today about the implications of House Bill 3492 and what it means to the city. So today, we're going to cover a brief summary of the House bill, how staff went through and determined what the new fees should be, our comparison for some sample fees and sample projects, what our recommendation is, and we'll look for your feedback for how to go forward in the future. So House Bill 3492 changes the way we can charge fees for inspection for new development. Specifically, the city charges a percentage of the construction cost for the public improvements as the developer states what the improvements are, and right now, that's a 4% fee. So we can no longer set fees based on a percentage of the construction cost. Fees have to be based on the actual cost in one of three ways. You can charge the fee that would be charged by an independent third-party inspector, so that would be a consultant. You can determine the hourly rates for the city's inspection staff, and you can recoup that cost. Or you can pass through the actual cost the city is charged by a third-party inspector, again, a consultant. And it takes effect on September 1st, so as of Friday, if we don't act this evening, we will not be able to charge any fees for any new developments that are submitted to the city. So the fees and the hourly rates have to be published on the city's website, so we have to do that as well before Friday the 1st. So the methodology that we used was we did determine the actual hourly cost of staff who are involved in plan review and construction inspection, and that's all aspects of construction inspection. I'll get to that in a minute. We worked with finance to actually figure out not just how much are we paying per hour, but what's the cost of the vehicle, the cost of the cell phone, the laptop, the cost of the overhead, my time as allocated to those people, as well as finance. So it's an all-in cost for that inspector or that plans examiner. Then we determined for each item how much time is involved in doing that work. So for instance, with an inspector, the reference to the fire hydrant, it's not just, you know, the half hour or hour that the inspector's actually out there supervising or checking on the fire hydrant. It's also the time for utilities to go out there and do the kill on the line and to do the testing and all of those other things that are involved. So it's not just simply the inspector arrives, the clock starts ticking, the inspector leaves, and that's all that's involved in that cost. So after we went through that determination of time to do review and inspection, we developed a tool to help us calculate those fees based on that. We compared how our tool gives us costs to past projects, to a number of past projects. We got some bid tabs from some local consultants and compared it to some other projects that they had as well that we didn't have that information on. And then we moved forward. So question is, what does an engineer do in this kind of a situation? We create a spreadsheet. So we created, the spreadsheet has 83 lines of data. It has every line item that we thought would be used in, be inspected or be constructed in public works construction. That includes utilities, water lines, sewer lines, roads, traffic signs, all of the things that are involved in new subdivisions and development. So it also has 37 columns across that captures the quantities and the times for all different levels of staff, including the development engineer, the plan examiner, traffic engineers, inspectors, administrative staff, survey crew who go out and check lines and grades to make sure things flow in the proper direction. And then we move forward from that and put together and double-checked our assumptions and our sheets. So here's just a couple of examples for you. So a stormwater inlet, the inspection fee rate is $10.87. So if there's one on the project, there's a plan review of $10.87. The inspector fee is $439.15, which takes you up to, you know, about $450 for your total fee. Same for drainage pipe, it goes by linear feet, so the plan review is 5 cents linear foot. So for 100 feet, it's $5. The inspection fee is $2.41, so total inspection fee for 100 foot of drainage pipe is $246. So that's based on, the rate for the development engineer is about $108 an hour, so, you know, talking about, you know, maybe eight minutes of their time to do the review in the case of the stormwater inlet for the plan review to check and make sure that the lines and the grades are correct. The inspector rate is a little over $80 an hour, so you're talking about, you know, three hours worth of time, which involves multiple trips. So it's not just that, you know, it's one time they're there checking things, it's multiple times that they're on the site. Then to get into this a little bit deeper, if you look at a new commercial development, that would be a 100-foot lot that would have 100 foot of sidewalk, a drive approach, a new sewer manhole, water tap, fire tap, hydrants, two street cuts. So the construction cost for that is about $62,000. The current inspection fee is $2,912. That's about a 4.7% cost. The actual fee would be, under our new rate, $5,369. So we're actually been undercharging that commercial development. So the increase would be about $2,400. Medium subdivision, which is mostly typical area, that's 72 quarter to half acre lots on 24 acres. The developer's estimate for that cost, construction cost that they paid the 4% fee on was 2.1 million. Our estimates, when we went through and did our calculations, tell us that that actually cost about 3.2 million. So the $86,000 that the developer paid was really only about 2.7% of the construction cost. They paid 4% of their 2.1 million declared cost. So our rate would be about $92,000. That's $6,000 more than prior, and that comes into at about $83 a lot increase. So the large subdivision in the end, again, there's a pretty big difference between what the developer said that they thought their cost of construction was and what the city, upon further inspection, decided that construction cost was. So they paid $163,000 at 4% of 4 million. Really, we think that cost was more like 8.8 million, so that $163,000 was really only about 1.9% in fee. So they would be paying $250,000 under this new plan, which actually is 2.9%. So it's a lower effective percentage, and it would be an $87,000 increase. So in terms of the ability to charge either a pass or of consultant charges or to charge or just to hire out this to consultants to have consultants do this inspection for us, our inspector rate in the city is about $80.18 all in. The least-cost consultant in the area is $95 an hour, with the highest one that we have that we're paying is at 130. So, I mean, clearly, it's more cost-effective to use the in-house rates than it is to use a consultant rate and just to a pass-through. So staff's recommendation is, at this time, to utilize full-cost recovery of city staff as determined by the tool that was developed. We'll continue to refine that model. Now that we've sort of caught our breath and put something together, it's time to go out and talk with the development and consultant community and get into the weeds of these numbers and talk to them about exactly how we got to that $500 for a hydrant and why we got there and see if we can come to an agreement on that and make some revisions as needed. I mean, there's probably some things that we may need to go down on. There may be some things that we need to go up on. I'm not sure. I mean, we made our best effort in the time that we were given, which was very short. So we would come back to you, commit to coming back to you and submitting revisions at future council meetings. A couple of the things that I want you to consider in making this decision and giving us some guidance is that you could adopt this fee at this 100% recovery level that we're recommending, or you could adopt it at a different recovery level. If you don't take action, we can't charge any fees starting September 1st, and that we can set the fee and revise and modify it at any future meeting. So with that, I'll ask you if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Holmes here. This is kind of, I think, taking us all by surprise a little bit. I mean, I think we saw the House bill pass. We didn't know how it was, and I guess we didn't know exactly how it would calculate out. So, and we have to do something by the end of the week, right? And, but I know that we have a great relationship with the building community right now. I want to preserve that. And we started this process where we're trying to figure out what, how to change it according to what the state legislature is telling us. But I think there's a more thorough process we can go through involving you guys and the development community on how to work that. This is the first stab, and I got to think that we can, we have to have something in place by Friday, but let's continue the dialogue. And I'm not saying wait 30 days, like you said, I think we ought to start immediately and get something going where there's more dialogue, particularly on the more frequent, the more frequent events. I don't want to see a lot of, you know, variation on those where we're changing the rules in the middle of the game. And as a developer and a builder and an investor, that's a part that I don't like. Now, longer-term projects, I see, you got to kind of look at those over time. We will have increased costs. But we don't want to take this as an opportunity to say, oh, by the way, the legislature made us, you know, double the cost. That's not the intent here. But if we have to put something in place, and Amy, you think it's, this is what we have like right now, in the next 72 hours, I guess, that we have some kind of commitment. I don't know if we can do that. City Manager Ford, can we commit to, you know, getting these screwed down a little bit tighter with dialogue, or how does that work?
So, council member, certainly I would suggest that y'all, if council so chooses, pass a resolution setting fees tonight, and then city manager Ford can certainly provide y'all a timeline where we might come back and revisit those fees at a time period that makes sense, and I'll let him speak to that. But a conditional passage of fees is, I don't, is not legally advisable.
Yeah, I get it.
I don't think the intent is for the city to look at the
I don't think the intent is for the city to look at this as a new, a new expanded revenue source. This is a legislative timeline that's causing us to have to reevaluate these fees based on a different type of metric that we've been using. We had a simple percentage before, and now we've got to look at it as an hourly computation. So I think that, I appreciate all of the good work for Public Works, and Ms. Birlarly-Hyland always does a great job shepherding her department through these interesting challenges that the legislature presents to us. But I do think that we should revisit this and, and seeing if there's a way legally to make sure that the revenue looks more consistent, or the fees charged look more consistent in terms of outcome to the developers. That would be my intent, if it's, if it's possible for us to do that, and for us to begin that reevaluation once we lock this in.
Yeah, my, my, in line with, you know, my, my colleague's thought process there, my question is, on the staff recommendation slide, you mentioned, you know, the, the sort of three tiers there, utilize, continue, and submit. Continue to refine the model and revise as needed, and then submit revisions if identified at a future council meeting. Is that saying that if we essentially vote on this, you know, to, to get it through tonight, as we are on a very tight timeline, that it would not be out of the question that we can come back to this and revise it as we meet with members of the development community?
Well, we, yeah. I mean, we'd be bringing it back to council once we have time to do a more thorough review.
Yeah.
In conjunction with the development community and the consulting community.
Yeah.
Great. I mean, with that said, yeah, just given, given the tight timeline that we're all under, I, I, I think that's a really great way forward, and making sure everyone feels heard and that we maintain our valued relationship with the development community here. And just making sure that everyone feels that we're treating them fairly and, and, you know, we're not, we, we are not out to get rich off of, off of these fees. And I just want to make sure that that is heard tonight as well. Thank you for the presentation.
As my councilmembers have, have already stated, I think that the best course of action is to make the decision now and come back and reassess once everybody can have the conversation. We all know that every other year from January to May, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, true.
And nobody woke up in the morning deciding we were gonna stick it to the developers. So I think the best way to do this is to, I mean, because we can always go down, but we can't go up. And there, the reality is, is that all of us in all things, in all departments, all levels of this city, have experienced cost increase on everything, from staples to the air. So I think that the only fair thing that I can say for our city to make sure that we are good stewards of our people's money, but also good stewards of our people, is that we allow this time, we, we make a decision because the state says we have to. And we make a decision for the, the best, to be the best stewards for Waco. But we can come back and look at what it is and bring the developers and the development community to the table so that we can hear your concerns more, and we can look at your, what your costs say versus what we are doing the research to find. I'm sure there is a consensus that people will walk away, everybody will walk away and feel all right about it. So let's get there.
I agree with all my colleagues. I think we, we need to come together and reassess. We certainly do not want to hurt the development community. I especially, there's so much going on in District Two that I don't, I've been so excited about it. I wouldn't want to stifle that in any kind of way. And I don't want the develop, the development community thinking, well, we don't want to work with Waco anymore, like you stated a while ago. That, that, that kind of scared me a little bit, but I think we need to get together and really see what, reassess this and do what's fair for both of us, the city and the development community.
I agree. I think that I look forward to sitting down with each of the speakers tonight and other members of the development community and our staff to really look at the numbers and have a robust discussion to make sure that there is complete and total alignment and that we can, each side is able to, yeah, figure out what the actual impact of this is gonna be. And to the extent that we need to amend this, we'll do it immediately and as quickly as possible.
Is there any other discussion on this? If not, next we'll move to Work Session 2023-621.
Council so wanted y'all to take up the Resolution 2023-623, but that's completely up to.
That's fine.
Presiding officer's discretion.
Yep. We'll take, we'll move to Resolution Six, uh, 2023-623 is their motion.
Move to approve. I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Please, both the council.
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Holmes?
Yes.
Porterood?
Yes.
Ewing?
Meek?
Yes, that motion carries, and we'll move to Work Session 2023-621.
All right, Mayor, we, we have our final work session this evening, Work Session 621, I believe, discussion of changes from the City Manager's filed budget, recommended FY 2324 operating budget and CIP, those changes compared to the final proposed budget. Nick Sarpy, our Chief Financial Officer, and Paul Kane, our Assistant City Manager, will be working through this presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As Bradley said, we're here to give you a final update before the public hearing tonight. All right, so as we started the process, the budget was crafted and submitted based on our council priorities and the strategic goals that council set for this year, as well as your priorities that you established at the budget retreat. So we're gonna walk through the initial priorities and initial from the proposed budget all the way through the final budget that you'll be adopting tonight, hopefully. So the 24 budget, the priorities and core service initiatives include compensation and benefits for employees as well as retirees, infrastructure improvements, public safety. There's a big focus on this, in this current budget, on business unit budgeting, so showing the true cost of operations for the various activities of the city, and then parks, recreation, and the quality of life investment. So the proposed budget. So as we discussed at the beginning of this month, the proposed budget invested two hundred and sixty million dollars in capital investment, one hundred and fifty-seven point five million, which was for streets, water, wastewater drainage, and bridge improvements. The budget included a five percent salary increase for all employees and market adjustments for police and fire and several other positions. There was improved benefits for city employees, including mental health options, which included lower, lower insurance copays. We also, the proposed budget included a thirty percent reoccurring TMRS COLA for retired employees, as well as fourteen new public safety positions, eleven firefighters, and three police officers, and the creation of the beautification and culture program. Further, the general fund budget was two hundred and three point seven million dollars, while maintaining the city's reserves policy of twenty-eight percent of revenues. It proposed a tax rate reduction of half a cent, and property tax revenues and sales tax revenues were pretty consistent between twenty-four and twenty-three. Further, the budget had eight million dollar increase in sales tax, which was ninety-seven percent of the twenty-three projected revenues as of the April report. In some other funds, we saw increased revenues for hotel motel, which were consistent with what we're seeing this current year. We had the new street maintenance fee included in the budget, which provided a hundred and fifty-eight percent more in street preservation work, which allowed for new street capacity improvement program and the investment of over a hundred million dollars over the next five years. And lastly, the budget included the new park performance fund to provide transparency into the cost recovery for rec centers, athletics, and the Mammoth Site. As mentioned earlier, the proposed budget included a tax rate that was a half cent lower than the current tax rate at seventy-five point five percent per cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation, continuing the trend for the last three years of a decrease in the tax rate. The proposed budget included fifty million dollars in proposed CEO issuance for capital improvements for governmental activities, including a million dollars for drainage improvements at the Cottonwood Creek Golf Course, twelve and a half million dollars for Floyd Casey Park, which included the inclusive playground, and as well as six point two million dollars for the relocation of Fire Station Four and various other street and bridge improvements. Further included a hundred and sixty million dollars spread across the four major utilities of the city, including continued investment in the landfill, the new landfill, as well as the forty-six point three million dollars for the expansion of Bullhide Wastewater Treatment So in a taxpayer impact perspective, overall, the, the rates for taxpayers' property tax as well as service and fees, including the new street maintenance fee, increased by twelve point four nine percent, or about ninety cents, ninety-eight cents per day, with those rates still being lower than what, on an inflationary adjusted basis, they would be in twenty-four, based on the CPI index. As part of the budget process last year, council approved increasing the home set exemption from ten percent to fifteen percent, and for individuals over sixty-five, as well as disabled individuals. The exemption was provided of fifty thousand dollars for disabled individuals and increased from five thousand to fifty thousand for individuals over sixty-five. So this chart basically shows the change from twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, so tax year twenty-one, tax year twenty-two fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, based on those changes. So for your average home set, the exemption went from thirty-two thousand all the way up to eighty-two thousand, almost eighty-three thousand over that one-year period. All right, so where we're at, based on the adjustments from the proposed to the current, we'll walk you through the changes that have been made. So as we've previously discussed, we talked about the adjustment to property tax revenues based on the valuations from the Central appraisal district coming in lower than what the budget was based off of. So we adjusted property tax revenues down nearly a million dollars, as well as adjusted up the transfer from surplus because our surplus and the general fund exceeded policy requirements. The adjustment also resulted in an adjustment down for the general debt service because of excess collections that were collected over the last year of the property tax calendar year. With that being said, even our, with our transfer from surplus of seven point three million dollars in the final budget, it's still lower than the one-time costs and the one-time enhancements that are included in the current twenty-three, twenty-four budget. In addition, the twenty, the final budget includes the addition of one new FTE for the Office of Neighborhood Engagement, with a total estimated cost of about seventy-five thousand dollars. And then one additional FTE for a total of two FTEs for the new beautification program with an added cost of about ninety-seven thousand dollars. In total, the costs were almost a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And this is facilitated, so no increase in the budget overall by adjusting the facilities department budget and having them charged directly to other funds and price funds that currently they've been charging to the general fund. So with that, this slide just shows the change in the FTEs, the addition of the two additional positions, the beautification position, as well as the neighborhood engagement position. On the fee schedule side, there is two changes, two overarching changes. So there's a new fee for the COVID-nineteen vaccine with the ending of the pandemic. It is no longer covered by the federal government, and so the fee is based off of, would be the cost of it. So I'm working with the Health District, they estimate the cost to be about twenty thousand and the revenue to be twenty thousand, so it's a clean offset. And then the new fees for, based on the resolution that you just approved, are included in the So with all these changes, the overall budget in total doesn't change. It's the same as it was as the proposed, there are just slight tweaks in the accounts. Personnel and benefits goes up a little bit, professional services goes down, but overall, there's no net effect to the budget. So this slide, we just wanted to show the impact for the general debt service fund based on the changes and the reduction of the property tax revenues based on the excess collections. On the capital improvement side, there was several changes all related to the TIF projects. So this slide shows the changes that were made based on the first reading of the ordinance that was approved at the last council meeting related to the TIF, that was approved by the TIF Board, related to the riverfront development, moving, for some projects, moving them to cash from what was intended to be bonds. So like the acquisition of parking spaces originally was gonna be bonds as far as the proposed budget went. The changes move it to cash funding from both the TIF and the city. There's no changes to the acquisition of property. The parking garage increases by thirteen point six from the TIF, and that's all gonna be bond funded to be a total of eighteen point six million dollars. The utility underground project was not included in the proposed budget, and that'll be two point one million bond funded. The riverfront work acquired, project coordination, that wasn't a project included in the original proposed budget. From that, three point seven million will come from the TIF and will be offset by one point eight million from city funding for a total TIF, actual final funding of one point nine million. Lake Brazos Park will be added as well for five hundred and seventy-two thousand, and then contingency for all the riverfront projects will be funded from TIF cash. In addition, for the Riverwalk Development, initial two hundred thousand will be added to the bond issue for twenty-four. So this slide just kind of shows the split up between cash and bond funding. So we're projecting forty-eight point four five for bonds, and then six million dollars in cash from the TIF for these projects. So this slide just shows the adjustments from the proposed, which was two hundred and sixty point two million, and with these changes, the new CIP is about two hundred and seventy-two point two million. So what does the final budget do? So the overall fiscal year twenty-four budget enhances quality of life through the investment in neighborhoods and community by adding, investing nearly six hundred thousand dollars in the investment of a new beautification program, including two FTEs, the addition of one new FTE in the Office of Neighborhood Engagement, twelve and a half million dollars for the completion and construction of the Floyd Casey Area Community Park, and then four million dollar investment in the Metropolitan Trails Program Connections around Floyd The budget provides a safe and resilient city through a five percent general salary increase and market adjustments for police and fire. There's a one point six million dollar investment improving police response times, which includes three new police officer positions and nine new vehicles. There's eleven new firefighter positions, and six point two million dollars is allocated for the relocation of Fire Station Four to LaSalle Avenue. The budget facilitates economic development through the investment of four million dollars in economic, economic development initiatives through WEMAC. There's fifty-four point five million dollars investment in the Riverfront Development in twenty-four, and one point four million dollars in funding for our economic development support organizations. The budget improves infrastructure by investing two hundred and seventy-two point four million dollars in capital investments, one hundred and fifty-seven and a half million of which is for water, wastewater drainage, streets and bridge system. And then the new street maintenance fee program provides a hundred and fifty-eight percent more in street preservation work through the ten dollar a month fee for single-family residents and charges for non-residential properties based on the amount of traffic that they create. And this allows for the investment of over a hundred million dollars in the new street capacity program. The budget also creates a culture of equity inclusion by establishing a thirty percent reoccurring TMRS COLA for retired employees and reduces water rates for residential customers that use, on average, eight thousand gallons of water or less a month by continuing to implement the use more, pay more. by continuing to implement the use more, pay more concept. The budget also builds a high-performing organization through the 5% general salary increase for all other employees, the tax rate reduction of half a cent, improvement in benefits for city employees, including the mental health improvements, a general fund budget that maintains policy reserves at 28%, and a new park performance fund, which improves transparency related to recreational activities. And lastly, the budget supports sustainability with a $1.2 million expansion of landfill gas system and energy efficiency sustainability improvements to city facilities, including the potential installation of public electric vehicle charging stations. All right, so we're almost done. So after today, after today's public hearing, we'll have one more public hearing related to tax rate next week. Any questions?
No questions.
For staff.
While I did enjoy the David Letterman presentation last year, this was a more efficient way of going about it. But that was still such a classic, though. Or is there still something in your back pocket?
No, sir, not yet.
Come on, Paul.
Y'all have done an amazing job through this process yet again. I prepared kind of a written statement, but I'll just try to summarize it, which is, I think this, again, there's a lot to celebrate here. And kudos to our mayor and this council, our city manager, Paul Kane, Nick, and your team. Y'all have just done amazing work. I think we're building on our historic property tax exemptions. I know we're voting on the tax rate next meeting, which is a week from now, but we're building on those historic tax exemptions for homeowners, senior citizens, the disabled, and still, for the third year in a row, as you mentioned, cut the property tax rate, which is significant. I think the record $260 million capital investments in water, sewer drainage, streets, bridges, and park systems is such a significant investment, not only in our present, but also in our future. And for me, just to see the high-capacity road upgrades that are coming for our high-growth corridors in several of our council districts is music to my ears. I'm excited about the $26 million that's allocated for the street capacity program and many more millions to come in the next five years as we address those streets. For me, Chapel Road and West Warren I'm most excited about. I'm excited about the firefighter positions that we added for both District 2 and District 3 as we get new fire facilities in each of our districts. I think that's definitely necessary. And I really like, I think, the 5% across the board and increase for fire and police is just a way of demonstrating that we are a model employer and we are seeking the best and brightest, both to retain and recruit for our city staff. And I love the mental health benefits adjustments. I think reducing that co-pay down to a manageable, kind of a primary care visit co-pay, as opposed to a high specialist co-pay, will really encourage our hard-working and, at times, overburdened employees who are doing the good work of the city to go seek the mental health that they may need as circumstances may arise. And so I'm excited about that, and I'm proud to support this budget.
Holmes here. I'll just chime in too. Every time we talk about the budget, I kind of say the same thing, but I'll say the same thing one more time. Or maybe I say it to the last time. Want to do it again next week. But this thing, great job, guys. Heavy on infrastructure and public safety, which I think are the two big parts of what we are trying to get done here as a council. As Councilmember Bordeur had mentioned, $260 million in CapEx, hiring new, 14 new police and fire folks, getting all of our city employees right with the 5% across the board raise to kind of keep up with inflation. We had some corrections on compensation for fire and police that were maybe a little more than that 5%, but I think it's money well-spent for public safety. We did some big moving on for the retired city workers as well this time around, which I think we've been hearing about for quite some time. And I like how we're being thoughtful about cash flow and leverage here, because as we have this cash flow coming into the city, leverage can be a very creative thing, can be a dangerous thing. So I like how the city staff is thinking about how we most, or how we best use that. We're maintaining strong cash reserves, which I think is a hallmark of these last few budgets, where we are building up cash. And all at the same time, we lowered the tax rate, third year in a row. And as Josh mentioned, we got the opportunity last year to dramatically adjust the exemptions. We could have, there was talk about us phasing that in over two or three years. We decided to do it all at once last year so folks could benefit immediately. So overall, good budget. We'll have, I guess, the last, we've got it next week? We have the last?
The budget tonight, then the tax rate ordinance on the 5th.
Okay, all right. Good job, guys.
Can I just ask? And this may be a question for Amy in Public Works. If she needs to answer, then we can talk offline. But going back to the street fee, I know that there, we've thrown around exemptions for that. Is it, are we anywhere near having those concrete in writing somewhere as far as what and if the exemptions would look like for the street fee there?
So the exemption right now is crafted, excuse me, is crafted in the ordinance is if you don't own a vehicle, you don't have to pay the tax. Administratively, how that's going to work to prove that up, I don't think we're quite there yet. But in the ordinance that's before you tonight, I believe it has that term in it.
Anything for fixed-income individuals, retirees, 65 and older?
No, sir, not in the current ordinance. If you don't own a vehicle, you wouldn't have to pay the tax, or pay the fee.
I want to thank, thank you, Nick. This budget, all the years that I've been on, this has been one of the easiest budgets, and I appreciate the delivery of the budget to my house. And so I was able to flip through there and look, you know, line items and whatever. But I appreciate that, and Bradley, thank you for thinking about us in that manner. But I like this budget. Thank you for making it easy for us and taking care of the city of Waco employees and making sure that our citizens know that we have a workforce that appreciates working for us because we take care of them. So thank you.
Thank you.
All I'll say is that I feel very heard, and I feel like this council feels very heard, and I think that's really hard. So to Bradley and Paul and Nick, who work really, really hard to hear each of us and hear our priorities and find a way to have that represented in the budget, I know that's really, really difficult. And I think that I, I think that we're headed in a really good direction in our city, but I don't think that that's necessarily easy to figure out how to put that in the form of a budget. And so I really appreciate the dedication and hard work that y'all deploy and employ to get us to where we are. So thank you so much.
Mayor, councilwoman, we certainly appreciate your kind words and compliments tonight. But from our perspective, it begins with y'all and the direction that you give us. I think we started, what, late March, early April, with a retreat and getting your ideas. And you remember the poker chip game where we put your priorities and that kind of thing? And, you know, trying to have some fun with it, but it begins with that. And it begins with y'all setting those early ideas and policy goals for us, and then working closely with Bradley to help bring those to fruition. And then, you know, of course, he leading the rest of the team. And, you know, Nick and I spent a lot of time on it, but I certainly want to thank our city management team, all Deidre, Ryan, Lisa, all of them, working with their departments to make this thing come together. So in addition to the folks you mentioned, there's a big group of folks to get involved, but it begins with y'all and your leadership and direction to us. So appreciate that, and we'll continue to work with you and hopefully give the citizens of Waco a good, strong budget every year. But thank you for your kind words.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this? If not, we will move to ordinance 2023-624.
An ordinance of the City of Waco, Texas, approving a boundary agreement via interlocal agreement with the City of McGregor, Texas, to alter both the city's Water Certificates of Convenience and Necessity, CCN, service areas, and the city limit boundaries between the City of Waco and the City of McGregor. Approving a purchase and sales agreement for the conveyance and acceptance of 1.382 acre parcel land located at the northwest intersection of US Highway 84 at Valverde Road and out of the Lorenzo D. Bragg survey, D. Bragg survey, abstract number 101, McLean and Appraisal District ID number 372622 from McGregor. Repealing all ordinance to parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date, and finding and determining the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law. This ordinance was approved by a 6-0 council vote on first reading on August 15, 2023.
Is there a motion?
Reproval on second reading?
Second.
Motion second and discussion? Please pull the council.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Porterood?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes.
Carries and will move to ordinance 2023-625.
Amending Chapter 22, Straits, Sidewalks, and Certain Other Public Places of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waco, Texas by adding a new Article 7 entitled "Street Maintenance Fee", providing for definitions, making certain findings, providing for creation of a street maintenance special revenue fund, providing for administration of this Article 7, establishing a street maintenance fee, providing for calculation of fees, providing for billing of street maintenance fee and penalties and remedies for non-payment, providing for an appeal and hearing process, providing for exemption, providing for no waiver of immunity, providing for discontinuation of street maintenance fee, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, repealing all ordinance to parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for inclusion in the code, providing an effective date, and finding and determining the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law. This ordinance was approved by a 6-0 council vote on first reading on August 15, 2023.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval on second reading? Second?
Motion second and?
Discussion. Please pull the council.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Porterood?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes.
The motion carries and will move to public hearing 2023-626.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing on Resolution 1, revising the schedule of drainage charges for the municipal drainage utility system in the City of Waco to set the fee based on the actual rate of inflation as opposed to the originally projected rate of inflation contemplated by the initial schedule of drainage charges. And two, including the revised schedule of drainage charges in the fiscal year 2023, '24, operating budget fee schedule for the Drainage Utility Fund.
Are there any questions for staff? We will open a public hearing for comments. Is there anyone here to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion is second and any discussion? Please pull the council.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Porterood?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes, the motion carries and will move to public hearing 2023-627.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing to receive comments on a resolution to adopt and approve the City of Waco Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year '23, '24. In accordance with Texas statutes in the City of Waco Charter, the fiscal year '24 budget was developed to address the council's strategic goals. The budget features the addition of over 56 new full-time employees, including three police officers, 11 new firefighters. The proposed tax rate is 75 and 1/2 cents per $100 valuation, a reduction of a half cent compared to the fiscal year '22, '23 budget, a rate below the voter approval tax rate. A public hearing on said proposed tax rate will take place on Tuesday, September 5, 2023, at 6:00 PM. That public hearing will be open to the public at the Bosque Theater of the Waco Convention Center, 100 Washington Avenue, Waco, Texas, and limit, Waco, Texas. The budget continues the efforts of the city council of moving forward together by continuing to build a high-performing government that promotes a culture of equity inclusion and enhances the quality of life for residents. The proposed new initiatives and staffing. This budget continues to build on the foundation to improve city infrastructure and facilitate economic development. The budget supports sustainability and effort to continue to make Waco safe and resilient. After today's public hearing on the budget, council will consider action to approve the operating budget and capital improvements program for fiscal year '23, '24, including fee schedules, glossary of terms and acronyms, and a certified tax rate worksheet. At the same time, the council will consider authorizing the city manager to expend funds included in the operating budget without further council action for those items listed in the resolution, including employee salaries and benefits, including deductibles and insurance premiums with TML for property and liability coverage, workers' compensation, and employee health insurance, including stop-loss, temporary employment and recruitment services, rugged story permit fees, utility services for city facilities and operations, approved refund contracts, debt service, bond payments, bank fees, armored car services, investment fees and collection fees, various services, upgrades, rental fees, lease payments, and supplies for city computers, copiers, and telephones, certain city solid waste carts and dumpsters, certain city cellphone and wireless devices, certain mowing services, operation management of the Waco Regional Tennis and Fitness Center, and legal services for water permitting, watershed protection, and water supply matters, services provided by McLean County Central Appraisal District and McLean County Tax Office, existing service contracts with RAP Development USA, Inc., authorized business grants, professional auditing, financial consulting services, operation management of Rosemont Cemetery, fees payments for city facilities, tourism, marketing, billing attendant services under existing contracts with UBM Enterprises, Inc., vaccine, chemical, medical supplies for services performed by the Police Services Animal Shelter or Cameron Park Zoo in a single fiscal year, given in the case of a single vendor who earns more than $50,000 in a single fiscal year as long as said vendor has cooperatively or competitively bid in police vehicles. And when the budget requires raising more revenues from the property taxes than in the previous year, tax law requires a separate record vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the operating budget and CIP plan. Since the budget does raise more revenue from property taxes than last year, a separate vote is required. City council will now conduct the public hearing on the proposed City of Waco Operating and Capital Improvements Program budget.
Are there any questions of staff?